Mr. Stockweather on the Limington Airport. And Kyle, I'll ask you to come up and tell everybody what you're going to be doing.
Absolutely. Hey, so yeah, Kyle Stockweather, caretaker of the Limington Harmon Airport. Appreciate your time once again for hearing me out. My goal tonight is to provide a clear factual ordinance-based explanation why these two conditional uses are in front of you. Once again, we're only applying for indoor storage in the existing buildings. That's all the existing buildings on the property. And a small indoor golf simulator, approximately thirty by twenty feet inside building one. With these are extremely simple, extremely low-impact uses. So let's go through, we'll start with the indoor storage here first. The first request is for all of the buildings that have always been used for going back through multiple previous owners for indoor storage. It's not new, it's not an exception, and it's not a change to the character of the property. Several of the buildings actually cannot adequately store aircraft because they've either been modified or were never built to store aircraft. So small garage doors, low-hanging ceilings, et cetera. So when we took over the airport, more than sixty-five percent of all the rentals that we inherited, there are twenty-four total rented-out units, were already non-aviation tenants. So we inherited them, and while our goal long-term is to replace them as they decide to leave with aviation tenants, as is applicable to the particular unit, right? So if it can accommodate an airplane, we'll replace with one that has an airplane. We're not going to come in and kick out sixty-five percent of the tenants of the local community that called that place home. So that's why we're applying for this use, to keep that in line. Furthermore, if it was suddenly disallowed, it'd create a, an extreme income deficit in the airport that would pretty much not allow us to survive the winter. So, yeah, being transparent with, with what's going on, that's what's going on there. We do know that, we've talked about outdoor storage, I think, pretty extensively. We're not applying for that. In fact, once indoor storage is approved, we'll move the three trailers at our outdoors, indoors solves that problem. So second is a golf simulator. It's a low-impact accessory use. It's being put inside building one, if you may recall, as a play garden at one point. It's the entryway there. It's got fourteen-foot ceilings, but a seven-foot garage door. The only major modification taking place to that, that building is the garage door is being replaced with a glass garage door that'll look nice. That, we expect to apply for one electrical permit to move an outlet to accommodate a projector. So, low impact on the site creates another stream of revenue and gives the pilot something to deal on the days off. Furthermore, as far as traffic is concerned, we expect one to two cars at the changeover time in the parking lot at the time. So I want to be very clear as well as to what's not being requested. We're not requesting concerts, we're not requesting outdoor events, no camping, nor short-term rentals, no large public gatherings, no structural additions, and no extra traffic on Route eleven or twenty-five. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from the residents as well.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will open it up to anyone who has a comment or a question. Yes. If you could state your name and your address, please.
I'm Dan Kidd, twenty-nine Kidd Road, Limington. I've been in the airport flying for like thirty-five years, whatever. My primary concern, as I've stated in the hearing we had with the, the event, is that it be used as an airport if we possibly can. I like that.
Well, I don't think he intends to change the use as an airport.
Yes, but if the finances force it, you know, a different way, it, here's my concern, Well, let me, let me first say, I believe the airport is a big asset for our town. And I don't want it to go away, okay? That's primary, okay? And second, I understand, different things to make money, that's fine. The best use, money-wise, is to use it as a, well, things associated with an airport. If you had a business and you needed an airport, that's the kind of thing, like a mechanic or maybe a drone manufacturer, for instance, or something where you need an airport, that, that'd be the best use and the best return on investment. Okay, now, that said, I understand that Kyle has to make some money and keep the thing going, okay? I gotta admit, I wasn't excited to hear about a marijuana dispensary or a childcare thing. The golf thing, oh boy, you know, that's okay to, to make money, if you keep it going. Okay, I'm okay with that, but I'd rather see it used in a higher capacity, which it could be. And I think, I'll bet you Kyle has that in mind further on, but that's my concern. I just don't want it to see, see it go to hell. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Anyone else? John, yes?
John Gallipol, I live on the Tucker Road. I also have a hangar at the airport. I have several concerns about opening up the Pandora's Box even more. What he was talking about is far as storage being held in hangars, that was done, basically, I guess you'd say, against the condition of use permit. And when it was found out by the town, they should have cleaned it up immediately and put it back to what it was supposed to been for the condition of use. And just to say that, well, that's what it is now, so let's just forget about it, let's give it a condition of use, that's not solving the problem. The problem is, is that there was a violation, and it should be straightened out and taken care of, and not by giving him permission to continue with storage. Because if he does, then more and more people will come in, no matter what he says, because it's easier just to put up a sign saying, rent a nice hangar for your storage, and they'll come in and do it. He bought the hangar, he's a real estate agent out of New Hampshire, so he knows the ins and outs of property. He's also an officer in the Air National Guard. So he's not a dummy, he knows what he's doing. And the planning board should really take a look at how it's impacting the property owners there, because we all invested into the airport with the hopes of it being a viable, good-reputation airport, not a storage facility. And with the money that we have invested there, it is slowly diminishing because of the lack of, I guess you could say, people maintaining a grip on what should be done there, as far as an airport environment. So if the town, the planning board does ignore the impact that it's going to cause to all the property owners that own airport hangars there, as well as the property on the other side, the financial loss that we're going to see down the line because of this action, then the planning board, in essence, by granting him permission to continue in this effort, will cause us to lose money and, how would you say it, our hopes of a better outcome for our hangars. And because you'd be party to our losing money, the town would likely face a class-action lawsuit from all of us.
Number one, don't threaten the town.
It's not a threat.
No.
No, okay, I'm not gonna threaten, it's a promise, okay? That's no longer a threat, it's a promise.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
What financial input have the current airport, or less ease, put into maintaining that place? Quite frankly, the strip is hardly worth putting a baby carriage over, in my opinion.
Correct.
And you haven't done, to the best of my knowledge, anything that's upgraded it.
You read our deeds, you will see that we're not responsible for paving the runway or painting it, et cetera. That is a deed issue, and that is, falls on the owners of the airport, of which they neglected, not us. So, that's where that goes. And as far as his so-called indoor golfing range, whatever he wants to call it, has he done a, a financial impact statement, how much will he make on it? Remember, the playground was gonna make all kinds of money, and they couldn't. He's gonna make money doing that here? I don't think so. He's gonna rent out a couple of spaces in the hangar for what? Maybe two hundred bucks a month for each, whatever? That's not what the airport is supposed to be about. And I hope that you, as a planning board, will see it that way. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else have any comments? Yes, Bonnie?
Bonnie Lord-Loughlin, Cape Road. This is a public hearing. I respect that the planning board apparently is familiar with the airport property, but for a public hearing, we did not have the opportunity to have a sidewalk. And more and more, we're all hearing about this property, the airport, for various reasons. I, I'm not familiar with what a lot of people are familiar with, the storage area, the, the pavement that might not even be good enough for a baby carriage, or I don't know what about a plane. And I am here to say, I respect that you all probably are familiar with the property, but I hope you can respect that the public, for a public hearing, would like to have the opportunity to get familiar with the property for a sidewalk. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Any other comments? Yes.
Jason Swanson from Seven Evergreen Circle. My first question is really for the planning board, and just in terms of the notification that we were given. The notification said, "Starkweather Airport Authority, thirteen Airport Drive is seeking a conditional use permit to change the use of the building." I guess my only question, and it's, it's really for an education for me, I, I don't do this a lot, but in terms of a conditional use permit versus a change-of-use permit...
This, this is a conditional use permit.
Sure.
The change of use is that it was a playground or whatever the lady had there with her play equipment, and he's changing it to a different use. So there's no two permits, there's one permit, and it's a conditional use permit.
But my, I guess my question is, is it a, is it a, is it a change of use as stated in the ordinance, as well as a conditional use permit?
A conditional use permit is what anyone in town, any business in town, has to come before the board for.
Sure.
And if there is a change of use, then they come for a conditional use permit.
So it's a combination of both? It is a change of use and a conditional?
It can be a change of use, it can be a brand-new use.
But I guess my question is, because it's very specific in the ordinance, the change of use and a conditional use, and the, the two are separate?
Well, that's, really, they're not. If I'm incorrect...
Yeah, I, I think you're getting tripped up here, that, that, there's not two things.
Okay.
A, a change of use triggers a new conditional permit, conditional use permit.
Right, and so is that what this is?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all we do.
Okay, so it's both? It is both? Is my, is, that's my point, is it's both?
It, it...
It, it's a, it's an application for a conditional use permit precipitated by his desire to change the use of the building.
Correct.
The building stays the same, we're not adding on.
Oh, sure, 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 no, no.
But because he's changing the use, we need to issue a new, and there may be different kind of conditions on that one than that were on the previous one.
Yes.
That's what it's all about.
I understand, I, I guess I'm just, it's, it's syntaxed, it's verbiage, it's just...
Yeah, I think you're just kinda tripping over, it, it's not, it's not really two things, it's...
But it's, it's a change of use requiring a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that was, that answered my question, absolutely. Okay, I appreciate it. And then my only other concern is, in the past several months, when dealing with, working through the event that happened back in October, there were taxiways that were made at the airport.
Whatever happened back at the mass gathering is not applicable to this evening's conversation.
Well, I'm sorry, but I, I beg to differ, just because...
In what respect are you talking?
Well, if we decide to grant the conditional use as storage, that storage and those users of those storage facilities will, will be on active taxiways of an airport. And I'm, I'm just posing the question, and I'm just wondering if there will be a method of delineating active aircraft on an active taxiway?
Well, there is one runway there, correct?
There is one runway, yes.
That's, so he will not use that as a travel lane or parking or whatever?
But that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about actual taxiways, which are designated for aircraft to taxi on, which, when, when they are unable to handle aircraft, have to be notified to the FAA that they are not able to basically tax it via NOTAMS. This is something we dealt with during the event. Now, there's a lot of taxiways that have been prescribed over this area. And during the events, those taxiways were what's called NOTAMS, which was basically a NOTAM, a notification to airmen, that they were not able to be used by aircraft because there were going to be cars on them. All, what I'm asking is, is if we give the conditional use to be used as storage, which it could be an aircraft, it could be a car, it could be a car towing a boat, it could be something bigger than that, I, I don't know. But is there a method, and I'm, I'm just asking the question, is there a, is there a way and a procedure in which we're going to follow to make sure that there is not a conflict of aircraft and cars? Because in most other, most other airports, private or public, there's, there's a way to handle that. And I, I'm just, I, I'm talking about mixing the two. If we do want to mix the two, and I, I will go on record saying, I am not opposed nor in favor of this, I do realize a business has to make money. I'm just saying that if this goes forward, it's something to think about. Aircraft and cars allowed on the same roadways, airplanes kinda play by different rules. Cars do too, and that, that's all. I'm just saying it's something to think about. That's, that's all, but...
Does anyone have any statistics on how many flights take off and land there, let's say during the course of a week?
Less than thirty.
Less than thirty? I would think less than three.
A week? No, no, more than that.
Okay, if you could, if you could, could I please, again, I'm just curious, I, I don't, I, I honestly do not know how busy that place is. And, and it seems to me that, what little bit I do know, it, it's not as though there were four or five or, or whatever airplanes a day taking off there. Now, maybe there may be four or five during the course of a week, but...
No, no, this is, I'm Jack Partridge, Thirteen Evergreen. On a slow day, it could be five movements...
If you could speak into the mic, Jack, please.
It could be five movements per day, perhaps, on a weekday, but on a weekend, it could easily be twenty to thirty sometimes. But on a slow day, easily, but it's not, it's not three a week, certainly not.
When was the last time there were twenty or thirty?
Per, per, on a weekend?
Yeah. I, I can see that, maybe in the summer, there might be few, but...
Well, today, not today, of course, because the weather depends, obviously.
No, no, I understand that during the winter and everything, it's a different situation, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Are those touch and goes, they just lay there?
It, it could be, I mean, you know, that's a movement, and, you know, each movement is a potential danger thing, you know, it's a hazard.
I have a question to it. If I had a hangar over there, and I no longer would want it to fly, then that, then if I couldn't sell the hangar, then it would sit there vacant forever, is that what?
I'm not sure what you're saying. If you're not, if you don't want to use it, it's your business, I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, I mean, I can't rent it for anything else, I, it would just stay there empty.
Ah, well, that's what this conditional use is about. You may want to conceivably rent it out to a boat, perhaps? Yeah, that, that's, that's where the mixing part is, because people who are not aviation people who have boats, they're, they're, you know, nice most of the time, but they don't know the rules with airplanes and how dangerous they can be sometimes, mixing the two kinds of traffic. A propeller is invisible when it's running, and you could easily kill somebody.
But it's not in writing that I can't do something with that hangar?
Ah, that's, I think that's what the conditional use is, which I wasn't aware of, really. I'm learning about this.
No, but I'm asking if the airport itself had that in there, when they, when they put the airport together, and people put their hangars up, were, were they locked in that could only be used for, for aircraft?
That would be on the deeds, and I don't remember seeing anything like that. I mean, it's a gentleman's agreement, if, you know, there are some people there who do other things now, and...
So you're asking, basically asking the planning board to make sure this doesn't go any further than the airport?
On this area in question, now, some of that has been deactivated for, for, taxiway's been, a taxiway lease has been closed, and still closed as such on the, on NOTAMS. So that way I can have no objection, because it's closed to airplanes. So I can't speak to how the rest of the airport, because there are other people who do other things, they may park there, antique car and air or something like that, maybe. And I don't think it's specified anywhere as to who can or cannot do it. Again, this is conditional use thing, that may define it, I don't know how that works. I mean, if you're, if you're not, if you have, if you want to use your empty hangar for something, I suppose you could, I mean, it's just a matter of how much, that would be unacceptable. If everyone did that, then the airplanes would be crowded out, and, and we haven't dealt with that yet.
But there's, there's nothing legally that says I can't use it for something else?
We have to dig through the FAA regs on that one, especially as private and public and public use, and I'm, it's a gray area for me, I'm not expert on that.
I know in two thousand fourteen, there was a gentleman who came to the town and wanted the town to take the airport over because they could get two or three million dollars to help take care of the runway. The town was interested in doing that, but...
That would have been nice, yeah, I mean...
So how do they take care of the runway now?
They don't.
It's not, it's, it's in rough shape. It's in rough shape. The, the present owner put some money into it, I want to say, five to eight years ago, and that was just sealing up the cracks. Yeah, we need some business, I know Mr. Kyle, I, I support any way he can make money to support the airport somehow, even if it's not aviation. It'll inconvenience us for certain small times or periods. And this, this, this thing of inside storage will be a nuisance and perhaps a safety factor to airplane people, but it's the kind of thing, I, I could look through it, look, look by it, if it keeps the airport solvent. So, how, where do you draw the line? I mean, if half the hangars, or eighty percent of the hangars were holding boats, that could be an issue, the airplanes would be crowded out and be unsafe situation, but if there's one or two, how do you draw the line on that?
I know John mentioned the benefit, the airport to the town, but can you explain that a little bit better, how the airport has benefited the town?
John?
John, you mentioned your name. Maybe it'll bring millionaires coming in here and spend money.
As far as the hangars go, there's two sides to the airport, there's the north side and the south side. His hangar's on the south side, so he doesn't really have an impact on the taxiway that is between all the hangars on the north side, which is what I'm located on. On the north side, all the individual hangars, they have their own little hangar lots. We had to get building permits for them, and my building permit says that it was building one hangar. So our side, we had to build individual hangars. And in our deed, it also says that we are only to construct one airplane hangar on the lot. So therefore, the north side is basically locked in more than the south side. If we wanted to do anything, like open a, maybe a flight school or some aviation-related project out of the hangar, we have to get written approval from the airport owner-manager if it's competing with them. But other than that, we on the north side have more, how would you say, rules and regulations to us. And so therefore, the town, I think, benefits from us, because if our buildings are really up to snuff, then our property values are worth more, and you get, we get taxed more. And so therefore, that's how I see the airport and us being the benefit to the town. And the gentleman who built my hangar did a fantastic job, and he knows all about hangar construction.
Thanks.
So you're saying hangars are taxed more because airplanes go in them?
Excuse me?
They're taxed more because an airplane sits in that hangar, they're supposed to storage?
Uh, no, the taxes for us on the north side are all the same, it's by square footage.
Right.
Right. So if I have a plane in my hangar, I still pay the same amount of taxes as if I didn't have an airplane, I was looking for to buy one or whatever. But if I want to start a project, like a body shop there, no way could I do it. For one thing, the lots are only seventy-five feet by a hundred feet, and most of them, we don't have septic systems, so therefore, we're really kind of basically airplane storage. So we're pretty much restricted, even though you can probably finagle a way around it.
But are we restricted to storage?
Yes, basically. And it kind of is implied aircraft storage.
Bob?
Mr. Stockweather, could you come back up here again? I think, I think we're getting off the track here.
Absolutely, sir.
You want to change the use of one specific building, correct?
I want to change use for all five, because they all...
Say that one again, I missed what you said.
I want to change use for all five buildings, because all five buildings have storage in them.
Five buildings, you're saying?
Yep. They are, because that's what they're already being used for, and upon this discovery that that was out of lines, Joyce asked me to submit a conditional use, so we are.
Okay, so, let's, let's break this down. You, you want to put the golf operation in, in what you call building one?
Building one.
That's the one we have had, I don't know how many meetings over the years, with various and sundry uses. We're, we're pretty familiar with that building inside and out. If I drive in there to that building one, am I at any time on any taxiway or on any runway?
You are not.
No, I'm not. The other buildings we're talking about, the other four, in order to access those, am I crossing active taxiways and/or runway?
So to access building two and three, you are not. You take the immediate right-hand turn, you're technically not in a taxiway. To access building four and five, which are the T-hangers, you are on a taxiway, it's a shared road and taxiway, which is permissible under FAA regulation. Once again, I'll stress that private airports that have never received AIP funds, which we have not, do not have to follow FAA regulations, but we try our best to, in light of safety. So yes, you are, and furthermore, people that use, there's, you know, their private hangars, because those are two separate things, for just storage, of which there are many, right? Let's, let's be very, not be disingenuous about that, they also bring their boats and things via those taxiways. So it's already done, especially by some of the folks that have concerns, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Dan?
I'd like to address something that you said, that I had mentioned before, you said, "What good is an airport, what good is an airport to the town?"
What benefit?
I said, "How does it benefit?"
Benefit.
Benefit, benefit to the town, yeah. Just for fun, I put, put it in AI just now, you know, and that's, that's kind of like a scary thought, but let me read what it says real quick. "I think it's a real good thing for the town. Airports are important to surrounding towns primarily for economic growth, job creation, and improved access to transportation and essential services." Now, I'm not making this up, I just put it in, I believe it though.
You put it into AI, did you say?
AI, yeah. I said, "What makes an airport important to a town?" Pretty straightforward, okay. "They act as hubs for businesses, support local commerce, facilitate disaster relief, emergency medical transportation. Additionally, airports provide educational and training opportunities, enhance overall quality of life by connecting communities to the outside world. Economic engine, business growth, airports attract new businesses and help existing ones compete nationally and internationally by moving goods and personnel efficiently. Job creation, they create a wide range of jobs from all the roles, executive positions and so on. Increased revenue, airports can generate revenue from the community through services by attracting new economic activity. Transportation connectivity, I, I won't go into the whole thing here, but there, there are a lot of things. I think we have a gold mine here in our town, and, and I don't want it to see it just kind of fizzle away, and..."
I, I've, I've lived here for twenty-five years, anyway, and I have not seen any economic growth that has come from the airport. The, to the best of my knowledge, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the airport hangars are owned by small planes like yourself and...
Yeah.
And, and John and the others. So I think what you just read, and I, quite frankly, I won't say what I think of AI at this point, but I think what you just read, wherever you got it, does not apply to Limington. I can see it applying to Sanford or Portland or Saco or Bitterford, or, you know, city-type thing. The things that you read, I haven't seen any results of any of that, based on all the years that I've lived here, and there are people who have lived here longer than I. So I guess I don't put a lot of faith into that.
I, I understand. I, I got you beat, I've been here fifty years, but, and I agree, it, it hasn't really done much economically to the area. I agree. However, I think in the future, these things grow, and I think it's something you have to think ahead. Did you want to ask me something?
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
If the airport is so important to the folks that are out there, and it obviously is, you wouldn't be here, then it's all... it's also obvious that that airport has not generated enough revenue in order to maintain the very airport that you want to keep. So in one breath, we're saying, "We don't want this. We don't want this. We don't want that. We don't want any of this stuff. But we'd love to have a new runway, and we'd love to have all this stuff working perfectly. It would be great." Here's the fact. You can't. It's not going to happen. Without extra, without a means of creating additional revenue streams, that airport's doomed.
I agree.
It will die the day that that runway finally gives up, and that'll be it. So I think what we need to do is to face reality and say, "Okay, what can we do to try to keep this airport viable for the people to use it, for the people that call it important?" We can't do that by closing the door on every project that comes along. I've been here long enough, about six years now, where I've seen a few of these projects come through, and every single one of them creates exactly the same, "No, we don't want that. We can't do that. We can't have cars going here. We can't do that." You know, there's a million and one reasons why we can't do things, but I haven't heard a single reason why we, what's a better way? How are you going to keep that airport viable?
Okay, I can't agree with you more on most of that, except for the one thing. It's been poorly run. You know, the last person that had it, it's just been terribly run.
Maybe you're right. But we have a new operator right now.
And I have my fingers crossed.
I don't know the gentleman. I met him for the first time tonight, but I do know theirs. Is that since he's been here, he's at least trying to look at various ways to try to increase the viability of that property over there. And I'm not seeing a whole lot of, what do I want to say, cooperation or
Support.
Support for the very thing that you want to keep. That's the part that kills me, is that it's important to you. You have substantial investments. The airplane alone is a huge investment, but you've got a, you've got a, you've got a hangar out there. You've got all these infrastructure, and yet, you're going to let that whole thing crumble down around your ears without trying to have some means of...
I agree with you more than you know, and I fully support new ideas to make this go. And I'm hoping they'll come. And I think Kyle, Kyle has a few. A little golf course, I don't know about that, but geez.
It's not a golf course. It's a...
Golf, whatever it is, whatever, you know, that alone won't make enough money.
Nothing in that building.
Okay. You have to do something that I think it has great potential, and I think we have to tap into that great potential to make this airport work. And I think Kyle might be the right fellow to do it, and it's going to take some time. And I think it's going to help the town, too. I fully hear you, you know, complaints and negative talk about every time you turn around. I understand that. But I do think that it is a wonderful thing to have an airport in this town, and I want to see it go. And we have to come up with some ideas that'll keep it an airport and make it a viable airport. And I think, I think some businesses, if you, suppose just for a minute that you're a businessman, and you have a business that needs an airport, you know, and you look around, where can you go? You go to Sanford, you go to Portland. You probably couldn't do any kind of startup in Portland. It'd be too expensive. Or you can go to Oxford, you know. There aren't a lot of places to go, the one up in Freiburg. Okay, there are just a few places you can go. And I think we've got a diamond in the rough. If a little bit of time, and maybe Kyle's the guy to pull it out. So I'm hoping for that. I just don't want it to see fizzle out, you know. And I hear you. We have to have some money coming in to keep it going. Absolutely, I agree.
One other question. Could that runway be lengthened?
You'd probably have to purchase...
A little bit, not much.
You'd have to purchase property more than likely to lengthen it.
It would really take something to lengthen that runway.
Yeah. You can lengthen it on the going toward the lake, because you hit the lake. You don't want to go any more than that. Another direction is the...
Do they own more property? Do they actually own more property where it could be lengthened?
I'm not sure exactly how much. Probably not a whole lot. But there is, there is property in one direction, and then Route 11 is the other direction. So you'd stop there. I'll go, you could...
So a small platter jet couldn't land there right now?
No way.
I've seen a private jet land in there, but a small one. But it's, well, there's a chance further down, you could improve it, maybe a little bit longer, and maybe the jets are getting better. You know, they can do short field landing and so on. It's an idea.
So what's the biggest airplane you can put in there?
The biggest airplane?
Yeah, and get back out again. I'm not talking about...
You got to get out, too?
Yeah.
Think ahead. That's right. The biggest airplane, you mean in weight or...
I guess, let me change it and save a little bit of time.
A Piper Cub or a Cessna or...
What I'm getting at is, could you put an airplane bigger, big enough in there that would have, that would carry something other than two or three people?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Different type, there's a million different types of aircraft, you know. Some are made for short field takeoffs and so on, and you can carry a lot in some of those. In fact, well, yes, you can. I won't get into the whole thing.
All right. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Bonnie, you had a question.
Bonnie Lord-Loveland, I'm trying to understand the public part of this property in my town, and I'm trying to understand the private part. And before I ask you all to explain it, again, for me, a member of the public who likes to know what's going on in my town, and this was a public hearing, I'm here tonight hearing people who own a hangar there, I think. And I just clarified with Kyle a moment ago that he leases the property, a five-year lease, from someone whom I don't know.
Mahmoud.
Sorry?
Is it Mahmoud?
Oh, still. Okay.
I believe so.
So I'm beginning to feel my way, and I'll have you educate me completely. But there are private aspects to this property and public aspects to it, I think, and I'll just say "public," in that somebody who's flying a plane could land the plane there with a proper clearance, I guess. I'm not sure if that's exactly a member of the public, but could I, if it's a private property, could I just walk on the property and see it? Maybe somebody's...
I think like with any private...
And I'm going to stop now, but if I can just say, again, it's such an important property. I can't, please tell me why you would not have had a sidewalk for this property prior to the public hearing. Please tell me, and then you could educate me about...
Because we've had about three, we have had about three sidewalks from, for previous renters, and it was the, the turnout for our public sidewalks, just about nil. You have one of our most frequent ones. Most of the owners who, even if one of the planning board members can't make it on the day of a scheduled sidewalk, owners have always been, ninety-nine percent of the time, always been open to allowing someone, whether it be a board member or an interested... So I would believe that perhaps if you were to ask Kyle, Mr. Stockweather, he would say that it would be reasonable for you and okay for you to go down and look at the property. Am I correct? Am I speaking out of turn, Kyle?
You're absolutely correct, and I can speak to these public aspects.
Thanks, Joyce, but I'm still here to rep, you know, to say that perhaps if there were sidewalks more liberally offered and offered in the shopping guide, like I know we tried to do a few weeks ago.
We are going to start doing that, Bonnie.
People would feel that they're welcome instead of having to, you know, ask for it or having to sort through whether I can do it or maybe invade the property or walk up to the property or ask this nice man if I can go to the property. So please have sidewalks if there are public hearings, even if you are familiar with a property. That's almost contra, you know, that's almost an indication. If the public isn't and the planning board is, that's not really right for a public hearing. But could you please tell me what part of, so the property is privately owned by Mahmoud, and he's leasing it to
It's my understanding.
Kyle. So it's a private property?
Yes.
And we went through that with the, with the event in early October, I think, those of us who were able to participate. But, you know, not everybody can participate in every issue for every property. Will you consider having a sidewalk the next time there's anything going on on the airport?
Every time we have a conditional use permit application, every time we have a subdivision application, we determine whether we're going to do a sidewalk. And the only time we don't do sidewalks, sidewalks for subdivisions is during the winter. If we, I'm trying to think of one where I would say ninety percent of the time or more, we always have a sidewalk, like the camps that are down on Pequaket or Horn Pond. We have sidewalks down there. Dollar General or, you know, like, trying to think of one where we didn't have a, well, I can think of one where we didn't have a sidewalk, was the one down on Twenty-Five where...
Collision Center?
No, 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 no. They're going to put in the...
Greenhouse?
Yes, the greenhouse and whatnot. We did not do a sidewalk there.
Yes, we did.
We did?
Sorry to interrupt you, but we did.
I didn't go. I wasn't there. I'm trying to think of where...
That was the sidewalk.
Once in a while, we don't do one because it just doesn't require it.
But ninety-nine or ninety-eight percent of the time, we do.
It usually is because that that specific property we've seen fairly recently, for example, Dulles Orchard.
Yeah.
We had seen that, and so we decided not to go there a second time, a third time.
A third time.
Yeah. And so that's typically the only times we don't do a sidewalk, is if we've been there fairly frequently, which we have with the airport.
I hear you, Grace, but you of all people I know would be sensitive to, I feel you all are sensitive people, but you would be sensitive to the planning board being familiar with the properties, one thing, but the public having the opportunity.
Did you go to the first sidewalk at Dulles Ridge?
Did I?
Yeah.
No. I'm not, no, I didn't.
Well, the point being that we are, when we determine, and it is a determination of the planning board whether to do a sidewalk or not, we are going to advertise them. We have committed to doing that. And if yourself or someone else wishes, we will always ask the applicant if it's permissible, like for a planning board member who can't make it, or a public person who can't make it, to go and view the site. And we've never had anyone say no, that I can remember, anyway.
Thank you. So tell me, please, about, this is a private property, but there are deeded rights, deeded sales to hangars?
I'm going to let Kyle come up and explain.
Okay, I just want to understand what I'm hearing, and I haven't seen the property in a bunch of years, so I'd like to know.
Okay.
Everyone says it's a big, important property in our town, and I respect that, but I don't understand it. I can't see it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. To clarify, we've got about forty-two acres that are located in Limington that we consider the Limington-Harmon Airport proper. That's the property that she mentioned, and as she did mention, yes, we are leasing it for five years with an option to purchase. It means that we're legally bound to purchase the property at the end of it. Speaking back to the financials, the reason we didn't just purchase it the first time is because it doesn't make enough money to even be financed. So this is all in an effort that we can finalize the sale of this. As John had mentioned, yes, I come from real estate. I also do finance for the federal government. That's my full-time job. Know how numbers work, and so unfortunately, that's the route that we had to go down. So, yeah, just to clarify that. So as far as the public-private problems, concerns, let me call them, that we are hearing, the airport is a, let's all speak to the airport proper, and then I'll speak to the properties surrounding it. The airport proper is a fully private, meaning that it is deeded, held in its entirety by a private owner, of which we are fully leased, meaning that we carry all the costs, we carry all the responsibilities through the contract that you have in front of you. That's been agreed upon by both of our legal parties. In the eyes of the FAA, what we did is, you can establish an airport through many ways. It can either be a privately, a private field. It can be a private field that's advertised on sectional charts that people know they can, could land there in emergency, and then or it could be a public field, meaning that without permission, they can come in and land. Limington-Harmon Airport's always been, to my knowledge, right, it goes back quite a ways, but it's always been a fully public airport, meaning that at any time, anyone can come and land at the airport. So that's the fully public side. So with that said, yes, if you were to walk in through an avenue without being technically quote-unquote invited, yes, you would technically be trespassing. However, we're a forward-facing public business, so we welcome you to come on and please say hi as we go forward. But that's kind of the legal aspects of, that we're talking about here. So with that fully, that public-private ordeal, I think that's where a lot of people get tripped up. And it's tough because I think a lot of times you want to look to the FAA and some of those regulations, but, you know, depending on which way you look at it, because we're fully privatized and we've never taken FAA money, that's where that falls. So speaking further to kind of the properties that surround it, on the south side of the property, many, many years ago, it was split off. It was subdivided. We can see those in the deeds, and property owners on the south side of the property have deeded rights to use the airport, so.
Now, may I just interrupt there? And the south side is where Evergreen?
It is.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am. And there are about three different versions of that deed, depending on when it was actually split out. So, you know, I could go through all the specifics. I think we'd be here for a few hours. And then on the north side, just past the T-hanger, so past Building Four and Five as referenced on your map, you'll see a row of hangars. Sometimes it's referred to as Hangar Way. However, technically, I believe on the tax maps and everything else, it's referred to as Airport Drive. You'll see a number of privately owned seventy-five by a hundred-foot lot hangars that also have deeded rights to the runway. So their deed is a little bit different as far as how they enter and exit the runway, but same general concept, right? And as far as financial implications, they got a really good deal. When they split everything off, they pay one-third the annual tie-down rate, which is basically nothing, you know. But it's something. Its financial burden is always there, but in the eyes of an airport, it's contributing very, very little. So, yes, speaking furthermore to kind of the future, which I've heard mentioned about, I will again go back to my opening remarks, is that as people leave those hangars that can take aircraft, we have a waiting list of ten right now to replace them with airplanes. However, I believe that as an owner, it would be extremely poor favor to come in and just tell people to leave after they've been there for twenty years, so they can replace them with a new tenant. That's the reason that we're here tonight. The other reason is, it's true. I do have to get through the winter to get through the summer. You may have seen it advertised. We're bringing in our own flight school. We are reopening the FBO, which is that little area to the front where that welcomes pilots, and we've worked with Titan Fuels to bring fuel back, and that'll go live hopefully January first. So these things are happening in the background. Not everything we do can be public just because the nature of business. Contracts take time, and we can't announce things until they're ready. But as far as the runway, you're right. We need money coming in to do the runway, just to get it crack sealed and fixed. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that was scheduled for this spring, this past spring. However, due to a number of reasons, we had to move it to next year. And so the hope is that if we can continue to stay financially viable, we'll do it next year. However, I can't guarantee that because, you know, things like this, you know, happen, and we have to, we have to go through legal proceedings, and those take time. So every time that we do something like this, it needs to be done and it should be done, but it delays those fixes that you've mentioned, sir.
I have one question. If I had an airplane that I wanted, was looking for to store over there and use the runway, would it be more lucrative for you to rent as an airplane hangar or as a storage?
The way that the contracts are set up right now would be more, it's the same. We do, once fuel comes on, not to give away everything, in a public setting, folks that are not using those units, if approved, for aviation storage, will pay an additional fee for non-aviation use. And once again, we're not kicking anyone out. We're not bringing in those side people, but that's just kind of more incentive to kind of keep driving towards the aviation thing. So it's, once again, it's one of those things we haven't published because it's kind of poor form, but you mentioned it, so I'll answer that question.
Okay. All right. I saw, thank you, Kyle. I saw your hand adjacent in the back.
Jason Webster, Freedom Lane. I just had a question in relevance back to the point of the conditional use. So all the hangars, I'm a... So all the hangars, I'm assuming that have the same rules, regulations? Because what I mean by is, during the event this year, I drove down and you've got a bucket truck sitting here and a car, and these hangars, they're used for a storage other than aviation, the private hangars. So my question is, you know, is whether this passes or not? If it doesn't pass, then are we going to make sure that all the non-aviation stuff is removed? I mean, is that part of the process here? You know, or if we're going to allow the conditional use, if he does get it, then I guess that's no in point, but I do see other stuff there as well, so. I, I mean, if all the other private hangars, this is a private airport, Kyle's leasing it, I'm assuming he's under the same jurisdiction as the, the private owners of the other hangars, and I would expect that there's nothing but, you know, airplane stuff in those, which I know for a fact I've seen that there isn't. So that was my biggest point, is if for some reason it doesn't, you know, on the flipside to this, are we going to make sure that they all don't? You know, it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander type stuff? That's all. That's just...
I think it might make a pretty big difference if I own the hangar and I don't have an airplane in it, and I store my stuff in there. It's different than if I had some commercial buildings on the property and I'm going to collect fees for people to store whatever, you know, vehicles, camper's boats, whatever it may be. I think there's a big distinction there because it, you know, it's like, you know, you know, maybe you park your cars outside because you've got too much stuff in your garage, you know, does that mean, you know, I, I...
I mean, from what I gather, what I'm hearing tonight, that these are airplane hangars. They're deciphered for aviation, and he's here to change the use of his.
We've also been told that the deed does not restrict the use to strictly aviation. You shall not store anything other than an airplane in this building.
So it kind of follows suit with Kyle's deed as well?
You couldn't put an airplane in there anyway, they don't even...
Right. I'm just saying, so in that case, then, I, I agree with you, I'm asking this question, so that would kind of follow suit with his deed too. It doesn't restrict him to just aviation, so, okay, that's...
Thank you.
All right, one last...
Just one quick thing.
Yes?
On the north, on the north side of the runway, with all the hangar lots there, every single one has an airplane in it, except for one that's empty. So just to correct him. Just now, buddy.
Okay. Now I'm going to close the public hearing, I don't see any more hands, and I will turn it over to the select board if they have any questions for Kyle. Anybody have any questions for Kyle? Pete has, oh, wait a minute.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't take those villains and lease into a plane, though, if it was a better...
Yep, and we have, so we've had one, two open up recently, we replaced them, both had storage items, and then we replaced both of them with aircraft.
Well, you're not replacing the storage you're doing right now.
No, I'm trying to survive the summer, the winter. Nope. Um, so aircraft, so once again, yeah, any unit that can accommodate an aircraft will either be used for our flight school, or re-rented to someone that can have an aircraft upon the current tenant deciding they no longer wish to be at the airport. So that's the future. And we're also, but this also does encompass a few buildings, mainly one, two, and three, that have units that can't hold airplanes too. So, um, those, I can't speak 100% to the future, kind of depends on financing. We're trying to turn building three back into a viable hangar, building one back into a viable hangar as finances allow. But yeah, to, to your point, as soon as someone leaves, we've replaced them with an aviation tenant both times, so.
Pete, you got any questions?
Earlier, you stated that probably about...
If you could speak into your mic, please, Pete.
Earlier, you were saying there's probably about 30 aircraft a day being used in the runway?
That's correct. So I, I'm a, I'm a numbers guy, I just did an, an average, right? So day like today, zero aircraft. On a Saturday, you might have a lot. So it's just a, it's an average based off weather, and that's just from when I've been tracking the data. But once again, um, we've only been there for nine months, so I don't have a 100% complete picture of the aircraft usage during all seasons.
To maintain that runway, you don't charge for landings and takeoffs?
I charge no landing fees for landing and takeoff right now. We could, however, um, the long-term viability of the air, of the airport really kind of depends on fuel sales, and so whenever you start charging, especially general aviation pilots that are only flying for fun, every time they land, they tend not to come to your airport, so it's kind of a fine balancing act.
Okay, and at the present rate, when are you going to deem that the runway to be unserviceable?
So if we were to an instance where an aircraft couldn't safely land and taxi, meaning that if they landed and then their tires, which can range anywhere from eight inches up to 30 inches, depending on the size of the plane, um, could not make it over the cracks, we deem it unsafe. However, as I mentioned, the plan is to do crack filling as soon as the spring hits.
That's a big crack.
That'd be a very large crack. Um, but right now it is safe, and we land small, low-wing aircraft there every day.
Okay.
What would it cost when we paved that?
About $2 million as it stands currently. It's 150 to crack seal?
Oh, was that it all?
To crack seal and replace 50 square feet of pavement.
Any more questions from the board? Nope. Okay. Then, excuse me, getting over a cold, as you can all see. All right, this is the end of the meeting for the, uh, public hearing for Mr. Stockweather. So right now, we're going to... Do you want to go into the conditional use permit now, or do you want to go take care of the other issue before that? Okay, all right. Basically, how this works, thank you, Kyle.
Do I, do I sit down? Thank you, Joyce.
How this works is we have a section within the ordinance. We go through, it's on page 55. It's called standards applicable to conditional uses. And it's six G, and it starts with one. And then it goes A through L. You ready, Donna?
Yeah.
Starting with number one, I mean, number, the letter A. The use will conserve shore, cover, and visual, as well as actual access to water bodies. I consider that not applicable. And once again, if you don't agree with what I say, please interrupt me. B, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance. Yes, the, um, traffic congestion, which there really isn't any congestion there, has met the performance standards. C, the site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations, not applicable. D, adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. Kyle, I would ask you to tell us, if you could come to the mic and just address how you're disposing of, of, uh, solid waste and wastewater.
Solid waste, are you referring to human waste? Yeah, so human waste is disposed of through a leach field.
Through, through your leach field.
Through a leach field, yes, that's correct, and a septic tank.
Okay. Or you might want to stand there because we've got another question.
Absolutely. Uh, do you want me to speak to the wastewater?
Yes, please.
Yeah, um, so the wastewater, so what I'm referring to wastewater, I'm referring to storm runoff, um, I'm going to be, be specific on that. Um, it goes through a series kind of of culverts and, um, ditches that are, were pre-established prior to me taking ownership. Uh, most things tend to drain out to the north side of the property and, um, you know, reach there as a small stream. I believe that's where kind of gravity takes a lot of it. Um, however, we have nothing built that directly drains into that stream. And when I walked in, I made sure that that wasn't the case, because I did not want to, you know, take over ownership of something that was actively polluting. Not that our wastewater pollutes, but just to be, to be clear.
E, adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. Do you have other, you obviously have oil and gasoline for the planes?
So I don't personally, because, uh, until January, when our planes come, I don't. Um, however, we will, uh, at some point, have our oil collection, um, and we plan on opening that up to all the tenants on the field. That way, it's one centralized disposal area that we can...
So you will, uh, contract it out to come, someone to come and take it away and dispose of it properly?
Um, that's one option. The other option is we'll probably apply for a permit to put in a waste oil burner. We'll kind of see which way it goes economically, but either, either way, it'll either be disposed of via contract, or if approved and, and allowed under code, we'll, we'll burn it in an approved manner.
What other materials would you have there that might be considered hazardous?
Um, fuel, so fuel's always our main one, any sort of lubricant, solvents, um, anything of, of that nature. If a mechanic was to be on the field, as of which, there's not one at this time, however, with the school kind of coming, um, into being approved kind of use already, um, solvents would be the next biggest one, um, that I could think of. Um, and once again, that'd be disposed of in, in a contracted manner.
Okay.
You're not, you're not adding any, um, you're not substantially adding to the waste stream by your golf simulator operation or storage operation?
So storage, pretty much 100%, no? Um, because they're not in that building? Um, golf simulator would add one or two people, you know, at a time there during the day, however, um...
But that wouldn't be hazardous, would it?
No, no, but being that it was approved for, for a playground, um, I'm assuming that at this point, the leach field could accommodate.
Okay, so with the purposes of this particular conditional use permit, there will be no hazardous materials?
Hazardous materials, no, no. Um, and in our leases, it all bans hazardous materials, other than fuel being stored inside a vehicle. Fuel is not to be stored per our leases in containers at all. So if we find that during safety inspections, uh, the tenant has to get rid of it, so.
Okay. F, um, a stormwater drainage system meeting state standards shall be installed. That's not applicable because it's an existing property. G. Let me go back to F for just a minute. Stormwater drainage system. I'm assuming the drainage system that exists is an approved one and meets standards?
So, um, to my knowledge, when anything was built, um, it was up to code at the time that it was built. Um, that's, that's the closest I could speak to that right now. And as I said, we're not building anything right now, so.
Okay, you...
We haven't applied for anything.
Yeah, I would say that must be...
Okay, thank, okay.
Yes, sir.
G, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made, not applicable, that applies to a new construction. H, there is adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes.
Um, yeah, so it's a, it's a shared well between three buildings right now, building one, three, and four all tap into the same well. Um, we've had no issues to this far, and, um, of course, building one has been vacant now for about seven months ever, um, since the playground left, um, but there were no reported water issues prior to that. As far as fire, um, we do not have any stand pipes in that building. We, I do not believe that she was required to have one at the time. Um, there are, of course, the fire detection system, um, but there's not a, a siphon in that building.
So you have fire alarms, uh, I mean, um, alarms within the building?
Um, so in building one, there's an NFPA-approved alarm system? With auditory and visual?
I, the provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties, including public areas, from detrimental features of the development, which this is not a development, such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, adverse visual impact, and the like. The only thing that we would probably require, um, the board can speak to this differently, would be, um, glare. As if there are outside lights, they should not be directed at, as an example, Evergreen Lane for...
Correct, so there's no new lighting being established, um, here. Um, we are fixing the lighting that existed on the building, so there were some exterior lights, um, and then I will caveat that by saying that there's runway lights, um, and things of that nature, of which, um, assuming when they built their house in an airport, they knew that the runway lights are there.
Yep.
As far as the visual impact, everything's going to be stored inside, right?
Correct, and as I mentioned, we do have three trailers currently stored on property, and the plan is to move those inside once you approve it, you approve it. So we're actually trying to, we're trying to clean up the property.
J, our performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. Correct. K, the use will not result in unsafe or unhelpful conditions. Correct. L, the use will not have an adverse impact on nat, on natural beauty, historic sites or rare and irreplaceable natural areas. Correct, it will not. So those are the standards that are in the ordinance that are applicable to, um, a conditional use permit. And when the notice of decision is written, and we'll get into that in a minute, um, one of the statements that it will be at the bottom of it will be that, uh, no permit shall be issued until all the conditions of the notice of decision have been met, and the applicant shall follow what has been voted and approved or presented. And those are words that our legal counsel has told us to put on notice of decisions. So, um, I will entertain what the board would like to see if there are any other conditions. Like, I have down here no storage of hazardous materials in, in outside containers. That, um, there will be fire alarms in the building one, which you already have, but we'll just state it in there. That lights, uh, shall not be directed towards the houses, uh, that are on Evergreen Lane or, or any other private home in the area. But you said that you're, um, fixing the lights, so they require, the requirement would be that they're directed down or reflected somewhere, so they don't interfere with the homes that are...
Absolutely. In our town, would never be to shine a light at someone, however, um, I do want it to be stated that between many of the houses that are on Evergreen, they have also cleared, clear-cut up until just about the property line, where we have clear-cut as well for the runway. So there's a couple hundred feet between us, but they would clearly see any light that would be on, just the nature of their property design.
But it wouldn't be shining directly into their houses.
No, ma'am, no.
That's the point.
I just wanted to make sure.
Excuse me. Do you wish to put any, I'm talking to the board now. Do you wish to put any conditions on the types of storage materials that can go in for storage?
No, I'm just concerned that they all end up inside, that's all, but you said that's what you're doing anyway, instead of a lot just here and there throughout the property.
Yes. Yeah, we, and I'll be fully transparent with the board, as I have been, um, or try to be, um, yeah, we entertain outdoor, outdoor storage, um, for sure, as a way of revenue. Um, I'll be honest, we got a few trailers in before we kind of put that stop notice on, and we looked at it and said, this looks like trash.
Right, you don't want to...
So, so we, so we backpedaled that fairly quickly, so yeah.
This stuff is all going to go inside?
That's the plan, sir. It will, it, once it, once approved, it will take me a few weeks to move other people's properties through coordination in snow, so let me just caveat that, but, um, we're also not accepting any more at this time, so they're all just being moved and or dissipated.
And, and I would add one, one more item here, that there would be a contract for any, um, waste materials, like cardboard boxes or stuff, you know, that, that if you're going to dispose of normal waste, shall I call it, that you'd have a contract for doing that?
Yeah, we have Melon and Son's contracted already.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, would you have, uh, hazardous materials, you don't want any hazardous materials in there, period, inside or outside, in my estimation, so.
All right, so I have right down here now, no storage of hazardous materials in outside containers.
So, uh, may I ask a question, sir?
Yep.
Um, as far as the airport proper is concerned, when we're operating aircraft, um, as the airport will do, um, and we have things like foil stored in its, in its shipped container, does that, I just want to make sure that that's good, and we're not going to run into a problem two months from now?
No, I, I, I think for the proposed storage operation, we're just trying to, I, I'm just trying to be devil's advocate here that you're not going to accept, uh, for storage, um, stuff that would be considered hazardous, um, you know? Asbestos pipe covered, or, you know?
Absolutely, okay.
There's a million and one things that you can stick in one of these storage places, and, and as long as it's clean and safe... and, and as long as it's clean and safe, that's one thing, but.
Understood, yeah.
Got a question. If that's going to be showing, can you park a plane outside your hangar?
You can. So we have multiple tie-downs outside. We could, for people, park planes, and I hope they'd, if you're watching on TV, come park some planes here.
Okay, so you'll be able to store?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So planes will be outside. So the airport is not changing its use. We're just trying to add to it.
Do we want to put anything about signage in there?
Good point. Sign, any sign approval has to go through the code enforcement office of.
Absolutely, yeah. Pending the decision of this board, we're going to apply for a new sign, but we're just waiting to see which way it's going to fall.
So I think we've addressed all the issues that are applicable to a conditional use permit. Does anyone else have any other concerns or thoughts? We're not limiting the type of storage you can, other than hazardous, that you can put there, in other words. We're not limiting your golf simulator. If there are lubricants or whatever that apply to it, obviously, they would be disposed of through your contract person.
We talked about parking.
Parking, I believe, personally, I think the parking that's there is probably adequate. Do you have any concerns?
It was for the child. You're only going to have one simulator.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're having one bay. We would not sacrifice any more hangar space. It's just unusable hangar space right now, so might as well do something that generates revenue.
Any other?
I got one question.
Sure.
You said it would cost $2 million to redo the runway?
That, that's, that's the initial estimates that we've gotten. Of course, we, with that number, we know we're not going to obtain it, so we haven't brought anyone in to do the core samples and soil samples at all.
So what they, what you're charging for rents and everything, I don't think you're ever going to get enough money to do that.
We, and we, and we may not. So we have some things that maybe in the future we'll try and bring on, but it's just not the right time to introduce anything.
They're going to fill the cracks, basically, is what their goal, their initial goal is.
That's our, that's our initial goal. We'll, we'll at least fill the cracks. That'll buy us a couple years, seal coat it, and then the plan is in five years to do a top coat if we can get it possible. Right now, it's stable enough that we could, but we've got some others things to address on the sides, so that the runway doesn't keep splitting to the side.
To address one comment that was made, there would be no cars on the runway.
God, no, no. And we actively try to keep people off the runway. We know that that's, it's been a problem from some folks. So we are actively chasing those folks down.
Is that a condition?
Yes.
No cars on the runway?
I have one other question. If I wanted to fly my plane in there and leave it for a couple days and travel over on the light, is that something that's possible to do over there?
Absolutely. $10 a night. That's a stand, that's the rate right now. That's why I make that quip.
So there is one that parks the planes over there?
Yeah, I've got 24 parking spaces.
Okay, anything else?
I do too, but we're trying to, we're trying to generate interest in it, and then we will slowly increase the price. Pots are stingy, you know, they are.
All right, you comfortable? All righty. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Stockholder's application for the Leamington Harmon Airport, as we've just read?
I have the motion to approve it.
Darrell moved. Is there a second? Bob seconded. Any comment? All in favor? Okay. All right. I will write the notice of decision up this week, send it to you. You're free to, to go about your business, I guess, this is.
Thank you, and the board for your time, and thank you, neighbors, for, for bringing the input. I appreciate it.
Okay, let's do the, let's do the mass. If there are individual conversations, I'd ask you to please go outside or in the entry room there. We have to continue on with our meeting. What happened to my copy with the yellow mark? Where's my yellow? I had a yellow. One of these with the yellow markings on it.
Oh, you don't have one?
I thought I did, but I don't know where it is. Yep, that's, you're going to need that one, though. Or we, I can share.
Yep.
I can share with Pete.
Thank you.
Jason?
Yes.
What we're going to do is go over this with the changes, and I'll email it tomorrow to all of you select boards, so you'll have it for your Thursday night meeting. And then you can set up your public hearing whenever you want. Okay. Oh. I'll be in Aruba. But somebody from the planning board, I will not be here on the 11th. So somebody from the planning board needs to be at that public hearing to, will it be somebody that can be there until the 11th?
It's a Friday?
No, it's a Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah, I can probably do it. What time, Jason?
I mean, we can shoot for the 18. We can try. I mean, I'll check with the board. We just put 11th in there, that way we have a little bit of leeway.
As soon as possible, yeah.
To get it passed, but I think the 18th would still work.
Oh, the 18th of December would work fine. She doesn't need it until the middle of January.
And it takes about a week to get the ad in the paper in the shop.
Yeah, that's true. So the 18th probably would be.
Worst-case scenario, I can do the 11th.
Everybody got a copy of this? Do you have extra copies, Donna?
I had 10 copies I need, and I can't see.
I asked for 14.
Okay, yes, I got extra. Who's missing?
I'll get this back too, but, okay, you can keep this.
All righty.
What?
Yeah, you've got one right here.
That's yours.
No, I got two there.
All right, well, take this one back. All right, does anybody need this, Darrell? Do you have one? Okay, all righty. So basically, what I've done is that all the changes that we talked about at our previous meeting have been yellowed. And any language that has been removed has a line through it. So let's go through each yellow marking, so we can be sure we're all on the same page. Basically, I added the word outdoor to the title, because there seemed to be some people who were talking about having an indoor party or something. So this is mass outdoor public gatherings. Is that understandable, agreeable, okay, not okay?
I think it should be outdoor mass gathering, public gathering.
Then we go down to the bottom of that page, towards the undermined or mass gatherings. The words were added, intending to attract, gatherings intending to attract, less than. And that just coincides with the intending to attract in the paragraph up above it. Going to the next page, nonprofit organizations, church, we sort of added that as a designated category, if you will. And we took out the line, the fee for a conditional use permit or event permit is waived for this entity. We agreed to take that out. A little bit further down, under charitable organizations, we took out the sentence, the provisions in this ordinance do not apply to events sponsored by SAD 6 School Department or any other agency of the town of Leamington. We took out the words event, operator, owner, and that whole paragraph. And as you can see in my, in my thing, I bolded and capitalized. That paragraph comes up somewhere on, later on in the ordinance. So that whole thing is taken out. And then we go on to, I wonder why that's, oh, wait a minute here. Let me see. Maybe C is definitions. All right, I can see that. D, the letter D should be nonprofit. The current D should be E, the requirements for conditional use permit, and E should be F. Okay, all righty, that's just a typo in my part.
Wait.
What is G if you're making E?
See, if you, if you go to the first page.
Right, there's A, B, C.
A is purpose, B applicability, C definitions, then. No, that's right. No, that's right. It is right. It is right. Sorry about that. It is right. I'm confusing myself. Okay. Now we're under.
That's why we have the ratios.
Yeah, requirements for a conditional use permit. And then we added that first paragraph, the provisions of this mass gathering ordinance do not apply to events sponsored by the SAD 6 School Department or any other agency of the town of Leamington. We took it out of one section, put it in another.
Right, because it wasn't a definition. It was a requirement.
Right. And then at the very bottom of that, in the last paragraph numbered one, on the last line, we removed the word and, and then after town manager, we put and the fire chief. Going on to the next page, under number three, the very last line, cleanup in public costs, if applicable, were added. The words if applicable were added within 48 hours. Under paragraph number five, owner, operator, I, or his or her designee, was added, and the word the mass gatherings was removed. It was, I don't know, I forget why we did it, but we did it anyway. Makes sense, reads easier. And the same in the third line down, the word, excuse me, mass gathering is deleted, and the word event added. Going down under number two, under site, I changed the word will. Well, first of all, trees underbrushed, large rocks, and other is removed, and the sentence starts, natural features, and the word will is removed, and the word shall is put in. And then on the third line down, the word and, facilitate drainage and prevent erosion, and then the words, and there's a period at the end, and then the words and preserve any scenic attributes is removed. The, under number five, correction of the spelling of the word permatee, it shall, the permatee shall be responsible for the posting of quote no parking quote signs on town. The word town was added. Streets serving the area as directed by the planning board in accordance with direction from the fire chief. Then, new sentence added, permission for no parking signs on state roads must be obtained from the appropriate state agency. Flipping to the next page, under medical, in the first sentence, the word by the permatee were added. And then the last sentence, the Leamington Fire Department will be on call if further assistance is required, that is removed. Under noise and hours, under the second paragraph, large outdoor vent, event is taken away, and it reads, no major or minor mass gathering shall continue beyond 10:00 PM. And then a new sentence is added, no major or minor mass gathering shall convene prior to 7:00 AM. Down under the bottom, second paragraph, alcoholic beverages, we took out that first sentence, so the only sentence in there reads, the sale of alcoholic beverages shall be in compliance with the laws of the state of Maine. The next page, there was no change.
I think you crossed out license, where it says state license permit, you crossed off license and put permit. In the bold part, that first bold part.
Instead of saying.
No, the next page.
Oh, state license, oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I said we were going to skip over that page. I'm sorry. You're absolutely correct.
That was the only thing.
Yeah, a state permit instead of state license. Yep. And then on the final page, under appeals, the, on the last, the first paragraph, the last sentence, it's five business, the word business days, business was added to that. So those are all the corrections that we talked about. So what we need to do now, unless you want to make any more changes, is to vote on those changes, and then I'll email everything to the select board and the town manager tomorrow.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Permatee, is it one T or two?
I, I thought it was.
Okay, because.
I know, I know, I picked it up on you when I had it one, and then I had it two.
Well, because here, it's one, okay? Okay, on, on the first page, in bold, there's one T. But then on.
She's got one T.
On number five.
It is two T's, so, okay, I need to add.
Yes. So it's this one that's wrong, the bold on the front.
Yeah, I got you. And I remember, permatee has two T's.
That's what I thought.
I remember you saying that last time.
Because this one's correct.
Yeah, and then I corrected it somewhere else, but not there.
Except there.
Right, the only one that's wrong is that first page.
Thank you.
Right there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, so is there a motion to approve the mass outdoor public gatherings as corrected?
I motion we approve it as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pete seconded.
Pete seconded.
All in favor? Okay, great. Finney?
It's good job.
Very good, very good, very good, very good.
Looks good now.
Yes.
You did a nice job, Joyce.
Thanks. Well, we all did a good job.
Yeah.
All right. Being 8:30, I, I have nothing else, and we can, I think the next meeting, we could do the minutes if everyone agrees.
I'm all right with that also.
Okay, all righty. Is there a motion to adjourn if there's no other business?
Make a motion to adjourn?
We're not going to do the minutes?
No, we're going to do it next time, because we're all a little fried in our brain.
Okay, so Bob made the motion, Grace seconded.
I won't talk for you, I'll.
To adjourn?
To adjourn. All in favor of adjourned?
Who made the motion, Bob?
Yep.
And Grace seconded.
My next gathering.
Well, hold on just a minute.
I saw that till late last night, and you guys blew me off.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Who seconded that?
Bob, Bob.
Bob.
Bob made it, Grace seconded it, vice versa. We, as far as our next meeting is concerned, it would be.
December 15.
15th. And at this point, we don't have any agenda items, but if anything comes into Craig's office, I will let everybody know. But as of tonight, there are no, there is no further planning board meeting until the 1st of 2026. But we'll post it and let everybody know if that changes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a happy holiday.